Everybody, would you like to stand in the place? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's May fourteenth, time is six P M., and the special meeting of the common council is called order at this time question on cell phone. Pageers, any electronic devices, silence please. Throw call Bridget Place.
Uh, what?
Eric.
Lynn.
Here.
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 Darrell did call, he said he don't think we're making this long. It's still work. Not much on the agenda tonight, but first thing, we need financial group, which we have discussed at the last meeting, about contracting them to do sort of services and financing and gather the revenue expenses for the last three years as well as the next three years with some uh, government plans put into place as well. And anything else that council will be appropriate? If anything else does come up that you think that would be sure to let us know. I'm gonna take a motion to contract the financial group for those purposes.
Real quick before we do that, I just, I know on the, the letter that got sent out, it kinda had an hourly rate, but I don't, I guess I don't remember seeing what we thought would be the estimate.
Fifty to fifty five, fifty to a hundred and fifty-five dollars in range. It depends on um.
Right, that was the hourly range, but what do we think the entire project's at at most?
Oh, the entire project?
I think we said nineteen was what it was.
They said it'd be nineteen thousand.
Yeah, nineteen thousand.
Okay. If you'd like to say this, limit on that object seat nineteen thousand, that would be appropriate.
And then I went back through where we have legal fee appropriations, and as of right now, we have probably about twenty-nine thousand dollars available, plus probably another six thousand that we could transfer into services if we need to, but I'm hoping that, yeah, we can set a limit on that, so I'm hoping it will reconsider whether that's actually it. That's my hope generally.
So I take a motion to contract the financial group for purposes discussed earlier with a limit to the expense of nineteen thousand dollars to seat that.
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. We're not gonna do, hold up the salary orders tonight. We have discussed it with employee, and I would think we need what, even within three or four thousand, what he's gonna be paid on his new job. I really hate to lose a person who's been well qualified, who has a similar job, but he was offered quite a bit more, and I wouldn't want to match it, or should. What his base is now, is just over forty thousand dollars. If I would take, if I send you a forty-eight thousand dollar payment, it could serve as a stake for us. What's the council's opinion on something like that?
I just, I don't know, I, I think it's tough to give him that much more, you know, being okay, twenty percent of their salary is a raise if you go with eight thousand dollars.
Mark, would you like to come forward? You don't expect this.
You know, Stacy can tell you, probably save the city on the one job they placed apart for probably five thousand dollars last month, which that, those don't happen all the time, but it's changing. It's gonna be a.
It's unfortunate. Gary, and I've talked about it, I spoke with Jamie briefly, he has been a tremendous asset in the last six months. I think Gary's got his spreadsheet, I think in the last five and a half weeks, he put in the hourly rate what we would pay for outside labor compared to what we paid for everything done with him, that he's done. It was about a six thousand dollar savings in five weeks. But, like Jamie said, just, just have twenty percent increase, it's probably hard for the rest of the city employees as well.
Ninety-eight hundred versus forty-one hundred.
Yes, so about fifty-seven hundred dollars in the five week period. We've got better equipment than we've ever had. I know on Stacy's lease cars, there have been four, five, six brake jobs that used to run about six hundred bucks, and he ends up with about two hundred and twenty dollars every time he tests them. Unfortunately, I haven't had enough time to compile more data. I will, we can look at it again in the future, but unless you really can proceed wanting to deal with it, maybe that's what it is.
And if the council would like to see this for comparison, it's got the time, the invoice number of amount, what it, outside manner we're charged when they're operating versus what is total, like the cost is for her. So. If the council can take a vote, it just may, it'd be my recommendation, just let it go. See if we can't find someone to take his place.
I think that might be, notwithstanding his skills and what he's done, critical of that, he may not be the only person to do that or do post that. And I just don't think we need to get into the business of negotiating with every, every employee, every thing that sets itself for the next time, somebody else thinks they're indispensable, or we think they're indispensable, or stuff like that, I don't think that's where we're headed, so I just. I'm willing to work with somebody to try and find a way to meet circumstances or conditions that may be unique or may be special in some respect, but has the same result of benefiting the city in a unique or special way or extraordinary in a manner, but the way you, what you described, we're gonna have to be able to say, okay, we're doing our best, and best wishes and good luck, and you do your thing, and we have to go do ours.
And it's probably appropriate we do anything like that ever, to readjust it, and have it done, it's not the worst time.
I think so too.
I, I think it might, in other words, it could be the time when everybody that's going to perform that service at that level of confidence is gonna cost that. So we might have to look at it, but I think in this situation, it makes it a little difficult for us.
Well, I think, yeah, we have to look at it from the standpoint of skill, strength, whatever else we're willing to buy, and what I live with, this, this.
You know, I talked to a couple of council about it, and it's on the agenda, and I just wanna bring up, you know, that we, for those who are well qualified persons, and nothing much we can do about it. There need to be sort of, vote on that, let things go as it is, get self-employed, something like that.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Pressure. The sign ordinance, do you have a clean sheet on that?
I have a clean copy except for one change, or I should say, a couple of changes on page twenty-four, which is the chart, so those can, and I'll look crispy on that, but.
Sure enough, and if I may clarify, I distributed a clean copy making the changes from the last council meeting shortly after the council meeting. Gary Murray brought to my attention that on the chart, while I changed the, changed the one point seven fives to the two point zeros to one point seven five in the business district, I had not done that in the industrial section provisions. I went back and reviewed the video on YouTube and my notes and everything, and I do think that that was what was intended to be amended, so I sent a order to Bridget where those changes need to be made. That's the only thing that I'm aware of needing to change for her to have a clean copy, is that on page twenty-four, under the wall sign section of the industrial part of the appendix, there are two or three places where it says two point zero, those need to be changed to one point seven five.
That's what, that's what we determined or already agreed to, right, we did last week.
Yes, yeah, I just, I just didn't, I thought the change up earlier.
So, why, do we need to verify that tonight, is that what you're asking, or what?
Uh, I would like verification that that's what the council wanted.
Alright.
So, that's fine, I understand.
That's fine. I have, I have not signed it yet, I'm not going to, but one reason I am, because I have that, and I might be working on it. But, I have at least three issues that I have concerns on, and if the council so deems that this is the way that they wish for it to be, and what they envision, I don't have a problem. But if I sign it, I want to make sure that we all understand what we're doing here. For example, the height of B three, you did reduce it from seventy-five feet to fifty feet. Now, if you look at the hospital, the top floor of that building is forty-five feet tall.
About fifty feet.
Fifty feet, so.
Of the, of the new addition.
So the, the side height would be permitted in a B three district to be as tall as what the hospital is. I'm not sure anybody's gonna do that, but there may be some businesses that maybe could afford to do that. And what we're looking at is the new area, which is up along Veterans Way, is B three. What is probably gonna be on the other side of the interstate is gonna be B three. We have, it's what, a half a mile, twenty-five hundred feet from interstate, but you have seventy-five foot tall signs that are in. So, do you want something that is fifty feet tall, fifty-three area, if you're trying to make it look decent close to town?
I did print, filled out a map which shows that twenty-five hundred foot radius for interstate sign. I also printed out the district regulations for business and industrial districts. I also printed out something that's in the memory, out there, explaining industrial B and. Versus on the districts.
Interstate sign and the ordinance we have now, what's the height that is permitted?
Seventy-five feet.
Ninety.
Ninety.
Yeah, and so we're reducing it to seventy-five in the new, correct?
Is that correct, Gary, seventy-five near the interstate on the new ordinance?
I have not memorized the chart. It was approved by the planning commission, made the recommendation of this body, and they accepted that recommendation. I haven't memorized it, I can go print it off. I'm, what we have in there are maximum heights, not, not minimum heights, not recommended heights, or not established heights in any way. And I'm, I'm comfortable if the members of this committee, if the council want more changes here, make better changes, you all have the consensus to, I will say, I would say that I am disappointed that these issues were not brought up at a planning commission meeting, or at our, our virtual meetings with my people, for yourself, Stevens and Green, or in between time, if we pulled this aside, we could've sat down and talked about these things in an individual way, I think it could've come up with a compromise, maybe the right word, that, something that would've been acceptable to you, to Claire, to Gary, to whoever else. So, I'm just disappointed that didn't happen in the course of time between when we first introduced it and when we finalized it, it's been a period of two months in there, and I just think that there's gonna have been, you know, some face to face, and let's sit down and talk about this in detail, I would've been happy to do that, and I would've been happy to try and negotiate something that would be acceptable to as many of just possibly all levels. So at this point in time, as I said, I am happy to turn it over to my colleagues, and what you all decided is I would certainly not stand with it, so that's where I'm at.
Lynn, I'm just kinda disappointed that you're disappointed. This is no one prompting me, the engine city engineers not saying anything to me to work on, especially after really third reading on ordinance. These have been my concerns, and you know, I didn't get involved with the planning commission meeting because the planning commission does their job, and I didn't wanna get involved in that. And some of the things, Gary, so this is all me, this is all me. I'm trying to plan for the future that this is really what the citizens of Greensboro really want, and you guys, the council representative citizens of Greensboro, that's why I will accept what you deem is appropriate. One thing I'm asking on the height, is just drive by the hospital, and see what the height is, so you can imagine how tall the signs would be in these new, these new areas that is not developed at this time. If it was something already going on, already had signs that tall in these areas, I would understand the problem, but we're gonna be developing these areas, but we're gonna develop what best fits our vision of the future for those areas. That's the only I ask. The hospital's not far from here, most people's on the way home, or can be, and just take a look at it and let me know what you think. That's all I ask. If you think that you think is appropriate, so I will support you. The other thing is on the.
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor, about your issue there, I did do that the other day, just, you know, we, I think we spoke about it, and I, I understand your concerns, I guess my viewpoint on it is that, I don't have an issue with it, I don't think there's a problem, and, and we just disagree on this situation, I guess, but, I did do that, I took a look at it, and I just, based on, you know, you've already got signs that are taller than that, in some of the areas, if you like, the McDonald's sign.
In the current areas, it's already been developed.
Right, but it, and that's just my opinion, I don't know that there's, I don't know that I see an issue with it.
We don't have anything fifty feet, I don't think.
Sure. It's seventy-five.
Yep, that's close to interstate, right? We want people on the interstate to see what we have here in Greensboro, so if they know where it's at, and what it has to take, get off, like to that interest, signage, information. If you would appease me there, do that for me, if you would, of course. The other thing is three hundred and seventy-eight feet max signage. In the current ordinance, it spells out two hundred feet, and that's if you have one side or a hundred feet per side, if you have two sides sign. Are you saying that three hundred and seventy-eight square feet per side, that's not, I don't think that's spelled out in the ordinance?
Which, from his main.
That is, on the zoning district, maximum area square footage.
Which zoning district?
On this is where you come to the speed limit of fifty to fifty-five.
Yeah, this would be, and industrial one area, free standing sign, single use lot, maximum area of square footage is three hundred and seventy-eight, so, for free standing sign. Business, commercial, and industrial park signage is entitled to one designation sign permitted per business, commercial, or industrial park. So that would be one sign in the total of three hundred and seventy-eight square feet.
Per side? See, the old ordinance, it splits it.
No, this is one, one designation sign per, per business.
So it can be for each side?
No, it would be two. No, it would be two design.
But you're gonna have a two sided sign, are you telling me you're gonna waste it one side of the sign?
Well, we're talking one side, I'm not, I don't, I mean. Right, this, that would be one side with a total of three hundred and seventy-eight square footage.
So you're saying you can't put anything on the other side?
Well, I mean, you can, it's still one side, it would be, if I have one coin, I have one coin, whether it's two sides to that coin, it's still one coin. So I, at least my interpretation of that ordinance as it stands currently is you are entitled to one sign, that is three hundred, no more than three hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Now, if you want to have printing on both sides of that sign, you can do that, but presumably if it's attached to a wall, it would be.
Yeah, just one side, I'm talking about free standing sign.
Yeah, if one free standing sign, on both sides.
Right, now it's two hundred square feet, hundred foot per side, so now we're going three hundred and seventy-eight square feet on each side.
I don't understand what you mean by one hundred square feet per side.
The ordinance.
Right.
You're allowed two hundred, total of two hundred square feet.
What it, was the old ordinance say per side, or is it say, you know, two different, facing two different ways?
I believe it said, help me out here, Gary, that was per side, right? Two hundred square feet, hundred foot per side.
I believe you're right. Well, that makes it a different square feet, that doesn't make sense to me.
So if that's the case, you know, we're increasing it three point three quarter side per, size per side, from a hundred square feet to three hundred and seventy-eight square feet.
Right.
If that's what you want, okay, just, let's just get it clear, that's what you want.
Yes, well, if that's what the old ordinance said, I believe is correct, then yes, what you're doing is increasing from a hundred square foot of visible sign face to three hundred and seventy-eight square foot of visible sign face.
Three, three quarter, three and three quarters. The size.
Well, yeah, total, that's.
Three quarters, two hundred feet, hundred feet per side of the sign. I mean, that's just something that needs to be clarified, whatever you do, whatever you decide. Here's the size, the one side signage on the building frontage, where it's one and three quarter, what is that? One and three quarter size signage on the tour footage of the building.
So, one, yeah.
Yeah, if you're okay with that, fine. It's just concerns that I had, that's a lot of signage, especially what you imagine against and everything else. And I understand, not everybody's gonna go with the full amount that they can do. That's the three. Especially the three hundred and seventy-eight square foot, that's something that does need clarification. The ordinance is not to go into effect until June first anyway, right? So you have time to look at it, clarify it, see what you think. That's why I'm asking, look at it, see what you want to.
Can I, I mean, can I ask recommendations, like you?
Look, what we have now, if that's not appropriate, increase it to the appropriate size, if you think what we have is appropriate, consider what we have, and, and, you know, I know we don't envision a circus signage around town, around Greensboro, we want our business, we want the information out, we want the businesses to thrive as fast as they can, if it takes signage, so we want to help and permit this, how much is too much? Because once it's implemented, it starts happening, or what you'd like, say, a little bit it's not difficult to close, eight, what you says, it must of course surround. But really, I was hoping this would be taken care of on its own, before third reading. So give it some thought, gentlemen, that's what I'm asking you to do. I'll accept your opinion. Anything else? The special, the signs, any other discussions? Questions, concerns, anybody?
Well, I, I guess I got one thing to, to bring up, and just something to discuss, and it's not on the agenda, just something I wanted everybody to kinda think about, on the, the grass ordinance that we were talking about in our last meeting, one, I think I talked to Mark about having a clause in there about, you know, repeat offenders, it's in there now, but it's only if they've sent them a letter in the last year, and what I'd like to do is maybe propose a change to where, if they've sent a letter in the last three years, or the last, I mean, and then that way, it kinda gets the repeat offenders, you don't have to keep sending them the letters over and over again, and you have to wait that, at least that takes care of the repeat offenders, it doesn't take care of the first type offenders, and that's the people that I, I just don't wanna end up abusing in this situation.
And you know, Jamie, the association cities and towns have kinda lobbied for something that might have the banks that take over property and knew nothing with them, and the, and the names of the farm dealers, and Billy, he didn't go anyplace because I never seen any information on it, but that would, that would've helped, but I think what you're suggesting has a lot of merit to it, if it's lawful, you know, if a bank holds something for five or six years that the people moved out, walked away from, their bank full closed on, and they, it's been left up to the city to maintain, and I think what you're suggesting, there is a few more.
I, I think that has to be part of it, though, it has to be maintained by the, it has to be owned by the same owner, just if ownership transfers, then we need to send it to a.
But how would, and maybe I'm just not being able to follow you, how would having sent a letter within the last three years help? If we send a letter months a year, that's, that.
Well, right now, initially.
And if you can go back, we don't have to send letters again, we just continue to do it, right?
Well, right, as of right now, the way the current ordinance is, it has to be sent out in that calendar year, so anything, let's say that we find this year, we have to send out a new letter.
Right, right.
Because it's a new calendar year, and then you have to wait, that was where they were talking about, you've gotta wait your seven business days from the time they receive the letter, not to mention how long it takes you to find out who owns the property, you know, send the letter, possibly, you know, how many delivery attempts it takes to get there, so that seven days might end up being two weeks by that time, and at least you don't have to go through that process every single time, or every single year, you can alleviate that, and say, if I've sent a letter in the last three years, for now, instead of twelve calendar year, we say it's three years, or thirty-six months, whatever it is, and you may alleviate that, that need. Just, just a way, I, it's just a thought about, a way to expedite it, so you don't have to wait that time period every single time, and you can get rid of, you can take care of the habitual offenders a lot quicker.
Thanks, good idea. I'll work with you on, on, if I got orders, and maybe present the next one.
I mean, and that was, providing that it's lawful to do that.
I'd be happy to give you my opinion on that.
It's lawful, we'll tighten the belt a little bit. Thank you, Jamie. Anything else, gentlemen? And then let her take a motion to adjourn. To adjourn.